9:09, I called this meeting of Pantronic City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, October 22nd, and it's 7:05 PM. Would the clerk call the rules, please?
Councilman Fai.
Present.
Councilman Musa.
Present.
Councilman Sidman.
Present.
Councilman Mahwud.
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, we have a question.
Thank you, please rise for the committee of the region. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with which no man can dispute. Okay? All right. Do we have any community announcements tonight?
Mr. Chair.
Just Councilman Hassan, all right?
Yeah, I kind of spoke to my attorney also because I don't want any conflict. But if I'm not talking on behalf of somebody, I'm okay. So, dear residents, I'd like to invite you all of them. This Saturday, coming Saturday, we have a big rally. Bangladeshi-American community and Arab community jointly have a Kamala Harris parrot. So, the guest will be the Nastina Bargaji, Director of Muslim Outreach and former Deputy Legal Counsel to the Vice President. And another guest will be the Brenda Abdullah, Deputy Director of Arab Outreach and the former Assistant Secretary of the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. And the Honorable Dilwar Said. I cannot mention his current position because of conflict of interest. And most probably surprise visit will be the Vice President candidate who else might be attending this parrot. Please, I'm requesting everybody to come. It will start from Bangla Townside and comes to the Holbrook and goes to the Jossakampo, goes to the Carpenter, back to the Bangla community, Bangla Townside. Thank you.
Thank you. The parrot is not coming, we are not coming. All right, thank you. Any more announcements?
Yep, the trick-or-treat will be October 30th, coming up here from 5:00 to 6:30 PM out front of City Hall, annually placed, put on by our Police and Fire Department.
Can I add an announcement to that? Early voting starts this Saturday. We encourage people to come out for early voting, even for absentee voting, to pick up your ballots at the clerk's office. This will lessen the lines and shorten the lines on Election Day. So, if you want your ballot tabulated and you feel safer being tabulated, feel free to come. It's going to be on, here at City Hall, Saturday, start Saturday from 8:00 to 4:00 until the following Sunday, 8:00 to 4:00. And then Election Day would be Tuesday. So, if you have any questions, feel free to contact the clerk's office.
Miss Le, one question people asking. So, anybody who was not registered, but are there, still can come, register and vote same day, right?
Correct.
Thanks.
At the clerk's office. Actually, within 14 days of the day of the election, you have to register in person for you to be able to vote.
Thank you.
And Saturday is coming, is it gonna be the first floor?
It will be on the first floor because the elevator is down and for it to be ADA approved, I don't want to have people to come to the second floor. So, it'll be actually on the first floor before they even attempt to come to the second floor, so there shouldn't be any confusion.
Okay. Interesting. Thank you. All right, so I'm having trouble with logging into the agenda, but I have a sheet in front of me. So, we move now to the proclamations, recognitions, and presentations. Thank you. And it looks like we don't have, actually, we have one proclamation, 2024 Fanby Court Awareness Month. No need to read it. Halloween Proclamation in there as well. And then we have a certificate to be awarded to Sheikh Yasser Abdussalam Abah. It says, "Your efforts have made a significant impact in promoting positive change, fostering unity, and improving the quality of life for all residents. As an Islamic mentor, your guidance and leadership has strengthened cultural understanding, inspired personal growth, and encouraged civic engagement within the community. We thank Sheikh Yasser for everything he does to serve our community and for the community engagements that he's doing and for educating the community about a lot of stuff, including leading some initiatives to clean the streets with some volunteers from the Islamic Center, which we really appreciate for that." So, we thank Sheikh Yasser. Good luck. I want Councilman Hassan to be here on the one.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for having a good presentation.
Mr. Mayor, can I just announce the curfew for the Halloween?
You want to?
The curfew because of the Halloween proclamation, just for, please.
Okay.
Okay, so, just for the Halloween proclamation, the city of Pantronic has determined it prudent to temporarily modify the curfew ordinance. So, Wednesday, the day before Halloween, October 30th, the curfew will be in effect at 7:00 PM instead of the usual 10:00 PM to just keep the streets a little bit slower. On Thursday, the day of Halloween, October 31st, Halloween trick-or-treating is designated, hours are from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we move to additions and deletions to the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to add a resolution D to discuss about updates on Kinif Avenue and the potholes around the city. Second?
So, discussion on?
And updates on Kinif Avenue and the potholes around the city.
All right.
Here we go, just D.
Thank you. So, that would be added as, as a decision D?
Sorry, it would be just a discussion?
Yeah.
So, it's not a resolution? So, we're just adding a discussion for the updates on Kinif and Potholes?
Yes.
Okay?
All right, that's item D.
So, Refai motion, I'm sorry, Councilman Fai and Councilman Sidman, second. And everyone approved?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any other additions or deletions?
No, sir.
Okay, we move to the consents.
Now, I need a, now I need a approval on the amended agenda.
Make a motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No objections?
No.
All right, thank you. All right, once you're ready, we'll move to the public comment, please.
Thank you. And Linda, is it Wonyet? Is that how you pronounce it?
Wonyet.
What is it?
Wonyet.
Wonyet. Three minutes.
I'm Linda Wonyet, and I'm a candidate for the Board of Education. I just want to make everyone aware that there's a renewing millage on the ballot. There's a couple of things to know about the millage. It's essential for us that this millage passes. It's a renewing, which means that it does not actually increase the taxes for anyone that pays it. It's a non-homestead millage. To translate what that means is it's a tax on businesses and houses that are not homesteaded. Those are usually rental properties. It is possible that we could lose to 23 teachers and/or paraprofessionals and staff if this doesn't pass. This is detrimental to our kids and their education. So, I'm asking you to ask your constituents, friends, family members, anyone you know to vote yes on this millage because it's something that's essential for our school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hassan, you're the one, three minutes?
Hold on, hold on a minute. I need you to pass this, keep on with you, please.
I have to start my minutes, though.
Okay, but here.
Thank you.
I need an extra minute.
You have to ask the mayor for that one.
Mayor, I'd like an extra minute. Today, I would like to identify myself as Radhika Mohammed Hassan. Over here, Mohammed Hassan, Chair, said he's making big noise over here, right? Making big noise. Then over here, over here, he goes, "Our people are not worried about Gaza." We are worried about Gaza. What's happening in Gaza, people are getting killed, but you're telling the news and telling the papers that you're not worried about Gaza. I am worried about Gaza. I'm a Lebanese person. I'm from the Middle East. If you're not worried about Gaza, I don't know what to tell you. That means you support genocide. Very simple. You are doing this just for your benefit. But let me say something to everybody. Harris has her own agenda. All she is worried about is LGBTQ, and she's worried about transgender. Something that's prohibited against every religion. I don't care where you come from, I don't care who you support, but at the end of the day, you're doing this just because you're mad. I know you are radical, it's okay. You know, you can be radical, but there's people dying overseas. It's a shame what's happening. You want to sit there and give false information? You want to criticize us because we're Lebanese? When I come to the city council here, people are like, "Oh, you're from another," I'm from there one. I can go anywhere. I've been to every city council, I've been all over Michigan, I don't need, nobody disrespected me. When I'm on this podium for three, four minutes, I can speak what I want to speak and I can say what I want to say. What makes it any better when there's sexually explicit materials? You know what's in sexual, they talk about anal sex, they talk about this, they talk about that, and then next thing you know, we're gonna change gender in prisons. She wants to make it, it's okay to change your gender in a prison. And he wants to sit there and tell me no. It's very simple, very simple. Look it up, it's the agenda. It's the radical agenda. And Donald Trump doesn't want this. And let me say something to you, nobody's gonna go to the Harris meeting, good luck on that one. Because I'll take a Al on the reporter before I go there. You want to sit there and criticize everybody thinking that you're the top of the men, but let me say something to you, when Harris loses, you're gonna be crying, sitting in a corner, crying by yourself. Oh, yeah, you can laugh now, cry later, buddy. You know, it is what it is. You're just a radical left side, okay? Democrat rubber stamp. You rubber stamp everything. He's under investigation with the Attorney General kissing their hands and feet so he won't get indicted. But at the end of the day, the indictment will still come through. It's a promise. It's a very hefty indictment.
I saw Mr. Donnie.
Excuse me, I'm talking. Chair, please tell him. Yeah, so I can speak, I can say anything I want on this podium. Once my time is up, I can do whatever I want. And I love my four minutes, you know why? I can criticize you guys, you know why? You guys are public officials. Look it up, ask your lawyers. Public officials can get criticized. And you guys, when you criticize us for coming here, that tells me that you guys are getting offended. Don't get offended about somebody speaking up. It's our children that are involved with this. It's the overseas, and Donald Trump is going to stop it, and he said it publicly. So, I don't know what people don't understand. Harris can stop the war, Sleepy Joe gotta go. And Harris gotta go. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Cora, Clement, three minutes or?
Yes. Thank you, I liked the speech this gentleman gave. And just like to address a little further also. Yesterday, The Times of Israel covered the mayor, and he covered our famous BDS, our famous BDS resolution.
I was in town.
Yeah, push the green button.
Oh, green button, sorry about that. We're on now, everybody hear me? Yes. Say it again. Yesterday's Times of Israel covered the BDS resolution that was passed here not too long ago in May and claimed that it dated as a smear of Trump, that basically Trump is being endorsed by a mayor who supported a BDS resolution. I thought, I was elated to see the fact that The Times of Israel actually covered our BDS resolution and it related with Trump, and helped Trump. And we love the BDS resolution, but we also love Trump even more. And I support Donald Trump. I'm so glad to see people like Abu Musa down there give a speech on behalf of Trump and also the mayor down at the new headquarters down there. So, I have so many people that I knew from the community down there, and I support that. And I actually sent invitations out to the mayor because Governor Snyder is going to be at a luncheon up Bluefield Hills this Thursday, and anybody else who wants to go just contact me. Snyder is on a point of emergency manager here, puts place receivership to City for a long time, and our council's request to void some of the public service contracts. But I really am glad to see all the support we give the community, and I know Mohammed Hassan supports Harris, and I'm wondering why, we've talked about Gaza, we can say a few things. How many people died yesterday in Gaza? Seventy-three got killed in a refugee camp, what we're having out there. I'm keeping every day, I'm reading about what's going on out there, the killings on both sides, what's going on in Lebanon right now, we're 2,400 dead in just a matter of a week. We must end this, we must do everything to end this. I believe, as January 25th, 1981, Reagan on his first day in office got the hostages released out of Iran. January 19th, 2009, the day before Obama took office, the war in Gaza ended. I happen to believe that a new president will end the war in Gaza. Israel's hand will be forced, that's what we need to see. And that's why I'm supporting Trump in this. I'm supporting what we're doing here to push that agenda in Washington. Thank you.
Phil Meyer?
Hi, Mayor, Council. Today marks two years since my wife passed away, Twila, and I remember the recognition you gave her, beautiful words you said, and I'll always remember that, and I thank you so much for that. Twila, of course, you know, went to Gaza many times, she spent like over 30 years, she's been there many times. This war didn't start, I mean, this fight against Palestinians didn't start on October 7th, it's been going on for, since the '30s and the '40s. Of course, we all want that war to end that's going on now, but we also want to end the occupation of Palestine and create two states if possible. But anyways, that's another issue. Today is probably the last meeting before election, and all we're hearing is people raving about their candidate, Tump D, Dump D, or whatever, everybody loves their candidate, and after the election's over, you don't hear anything more. This has been going on all my life. What I know is that our government has funded wars all around the world for 100 years or more. People aren't Republicans, Democrats. There are good people, there are bad people. There are people who support war and people who support peace. I don't care what party you're part of, if you're for peace, I'm with you. And as you know, you also passed another resolution besides the BDS resolution. You passed a resolution to support the Move the Money campaign. It was unanimous vote, we appreciate that. And that's to move money from the warfare to human needs, which anybody in their right mind would support, Republican, Democrat, whatever. We're spending way too much money on killing people around the world, reaching this trillion-dollar budget, military budget, and most of that is being unaudited and wasted with profits going through giant arms manufacturers. It's not making our country any more safe and secure. Can I ask for another minute?
Yes.
Thank you, so, I just want to announce that there's a, we're putting on our first public meeting coming up this Saturday, and it's called Moving Our Money From Warfare To Human Needs. I'll send you, I think I sent you all an email or whatever. We've got some great speakers at this event, Barbara Lee, Representative, and Mark Pocan, two people who sponsored the People Before Pentagon bill, and Rashida Tlaib, who supported the stop politicians from funding war. That means stop politicians who are taking money from killing people. Mary Waters for the Detroit City Council will be there, and then the other people. Over 35, over 25 groups are part of this coalition to try to convince our government to stop spending money on war, not only in Gaza but everywhere. Start making peace in the world and working with people instead of killing them. Thank you very much.
You have a full minute left.
I don't want, thanks.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, that's all for public comment.
Thank you. All right, so, we move to the consent agenda. This is a court with a single motion, with no discussion, and we have the first item, approval of minutes from the October 8th, 2024 regular City Council meeting. B, approval of invoice registered, date ending October 22nd, 2024. C, approval of pre-approval expenditure, date ending October 22nd, 2024.
Motion, second.
We got double-double. So...
I gave a first to Refai and a second to Al Samiri.
Okay.
I can still disagree with that.
Thank you. I heard the mayor put them, but okay.
I'm okay.
All right, thank you. So, all in favor?
Aye.
No objections?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a public hearing. Resolution 2024-139, finding proposed neighborhood enterprise zone, NEZ, consistent with city goals and master plan, and adopting a goal and policy statement relative to the proposed NEZ final.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have Isabel from CED to discuss this and answer your question.
I'm sorry, that was a motion, a second to start the public hearing.
Yeah.
So...
7:27.
7:27. So, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Would you like me to give the presentation outside of the public hearing time?
I'm gonna see, there is a public comment, so let the public comment speak first. Do you want to speak?
Hold on, I want to know, can you just?
I told you that before the meeting.
I understand, but I want to see what she wants to say, so we can, if I want to appoint her or not. You gotta let her speak first.
Mr. Mayor, your preference?
She can talk first.
Okay.
And then?
Isabel, come on in.
It's usually the other way. Go ahead, go ahead.
It's fine. Mr. Mayor, we have Isabel to talk from CED, talk about this public hearing we're currently in. And Mike from her staff as well, and also Conrad, our assessor, as backup. So, we got it covered, anything you guys need to know?
Thank you. Could we pull up the presentation dated for today? The public hearing that will be taking place today invites members of the public to give input about the creation of Site 1, we're calling it, the very first NEZ will be able to implement. First state law, this hearing has to take place within 45 days of when we notified the taxing authorities, and that will place on September 27th, so we're within that state required timeline. Council will be able to vote to adopt this NEZ on the 22nd, sorry, 26th of November, according to that state-mandated timeline. That's the meeting after this meeting, and then CED will be able to send to the state for review and approval of the NEZ. So, just the next slide would be great, Rana. So, we're talking about Site 1 in yellow here, and we are obviously well within the 15% acreage cap that we can have as NEZ zones in the city. Another item that you'll be voting on today that is a requirement for us to adopt this NEZ is a finding that this proposed NEZ is consistent with the city's master plan and development goals for residential dwellings in the city. And you'll also be within that resolution adopting a goal and policy statement. And Rana, you can flip to the next slide. So, those are the two items in yellow here, and a later agenda item today is talking about a third requirement of the pre-sale inspection ordinance, which is also part of this package to be able to adopt NEZs. You can go to the next slide, please. So, I have these later slides prepared, which you've been able to see in the packet already. If members of the public had questions that came up, I'm happy to, and Conrad is here as well and is happy to provide extra context if that comes up within the public hearing. I just want to read out the goal and policy statement so that we can get that out before you would vote on the resolution to adopt. So, it reads that the city's goals and policies relating to the designation of areas as an NEZ aiming to ensure the maintenance, preservation, improvement, and development of housing for all persons regardless of income level living within the city's NEZs are to, number one, promote the creation of new residential areas; number two, promote housing construction; number three, promote rehabilitation of existing housing; number four, encourage investment within target areas; number five, advance city strategies for homeownership; number six, utilize vacant and underutilized properties; number seven, increase the value of real property; number eight, enable owner upgrades to diversify housing stocks in terms of type, size, and composition; number nine, establish NEZs by resolution of City Council; and 10, approve or deny requests for NEZ certificates by resolution of City Council moving forward. And we'll, I'll be back up here to discuss a lot of those things later tonight, but I think that's all I have before the public hearing can resume. Or continue.
Thank you.
Mr. Hassan, do you want to speak?
Yes. Good afternoon, my name is Radhika Mohammed Hassan. Well, anyways, I think that you gave a good presentation about the proposal. I think you guys should vote on it, yes, because I'd like to see what's going on. Anything that has to do with fixing Pantronic is a good thing, and I think you guys should vote on it, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that's all for public, oh, let me just confirm, I'm sorry. That's all for public comment.
All right.
I need a motion to?
Motion, second. 7:32.
All right, I guess there's no farther discussion, we can, there's, do you want anything? I guess we can vote on it.
Actually, I need a motion to vote on it, because we only motioned in the hearing, in both hearings, we need a motion to vote on it.
Second.
Thank you. Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Mahwud?
Yes.
Councilman Sidman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Fai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to vote on this?
Yes.
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 Your vote was a yes?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2024-139 approved.
Thank you. All right, so, we move to the new business now, and the first item we have is Resolution 2024-136A, approving the first reading of the inspection of residential dwelling prior to sale or transfer ordinance to fulfill the state requirement for NEZ adoption.
Motion, second.
Mr. Mayor, this is a requirement of the NEZ zones. I do have Isabel here if you want any more questions. I know it's been an unpopular ordinance in the past, but it kind of goes hand in hand. If we want to do this, we need to have it on the books. There were some concerns in regards to people selling their homes as-is. This ordinance still allows people to sell their home as-is. It would simply pass the burden of getting their home up to par to the buyer. The ordinance does also provide adequate amount of time for a home to be upgraded within the ordinance, of six months, and there are some provisions for like inclement rather, or if it's going in the winter, or other things of that nature. So, I would encourage the council to adopt essentially this first reading, which we will obviously have a public hearing on in the future, and I have Isabel here if there's anything I missed.
Push that button, it's not green.
Thank you. There is feedback, so I can?
Can I ask a question? If they sell or buy as-is, is it offered NEZ option?
This is, this ordinance is across the board.
Correct.
Which is a requirement of the NEZ, but you can sell it as-is and just push the liability of bringing the house up to par to the buyer. So if you want to sell your house as-is, you can, but then the buyer is responsible for bringing the house up to par.
Even in an NEZ zone?
NEZs are typically, and this would be, you'd obviously have to inspect an NEZ, but an NEZ in theory is already being remodeled.
And it also ensures that ultimately what the state tax commission wants to do is ensure that when it is redeveloped or a new home is built, that before someone's able to sell their home, let's say after all of this development has taken place and they want to pass it on, that frozen tax rate can still stay in effect. And this ordinance guarantees that it would be able to pass on to the next owner if someone chooses to sell their home after building or renovating.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It's a very good thing when somebody sells the house as it is. Buyer buys it and sells it, but it's now up to bring up to the standard as a good thing.
Mr. Chair, as all, you, Mr. Mayor, and council members knows that we've been trying to work on this for almost a year now, able to help with residents or building or expanding their house. Now we're finding out there is other stuff behind this, where now it's required by, the requirement, we're trying to pass a requirement where the house needs to be inspected either by the homeowner, correct, or by the buyer, correct? So my question is, is for us to have this NEZ, that would, do we, is it a requirement by the state, by a government entity that we have to have this?
Yes, so I'll explain the timeline a bit. Per council's request, we've been working to try to get this done as soon as possible. We noticed the public hearing for the 12th, which you need to adopt some version of this ordinance on that day so that it can be in effect in order for you to adopt NEZ on the 26th of November. So it is a requirement. It's been one of the main items in that NEZ guideline page that we have added to the packet several times. And a short answer is yes, it is required to adopt. The state wants it in place before we send them any, propose NEZ for them to approve.
Okay. To clarify to the residents who are not here, some of these, but they're going to be watching the video, can you, little bit by simple, explaining what is a NEZ?
Sure. Rana, would you mind pulling up the presentation again just to.
The last version or the current version that I wanted, that I just had up?
The one dated for the 22nd would be great, if that's all right, that was for the public
It's too hot in here.
That's all she's. Okay. And then the next slide would be great. So NEZ is a neighborhood enterprise zone program through the state tax commission, which allows a community to reduce taxes on residential property for up to fifteen years in designated zones. Council is responsible and often through the support of the staff for deciding what those zones are. And generally, it's really helpful to have them to incentivize development of residential dwelling units in neighborhoods that have either high vacancy or dilapidated property or property that could expand and use improvement. So either rehabilitation or new builds qualify for this tax exemption. It's essentially a freeze of a tax rate that allows people to improve or build new property without being, for lack of a better word, hit super hard by increased taxes. So it is, I can flip to the next slide, Rana. An application process where when the city designates an NEZ zone, the individual owner applies to the program, applies to the state after the city approves it. And when you are granted a certificate, you can begin building and then receive that tax exemption. That's the simple version, I believe.
All right. So this is specific for the NEZ areas in the city, right? That's not for the whole city.
This is for the whole city. This is an ordinance adopted for the whole city to make sure we're in line with NEZ.
But the law specifies this only for the NEZ areas. The governing body passes a housing inspection ordinance that at minimum requires that before the sale of a unit in a new or rehabilitated facility for which an NEZ certificate is in effect and inspection is made of the unit to determine compliance. So it's only for the areas which the NEZ has a certificate in effect. This is going to be a trouble for the whole community if we pass it. It tends to be only for that specific area that's included in the NEZ.
Mr. Mayor, I beg to differ that it's going to be trouble for the whole community. I believe this will actually be beneficial to the whole community. As I stated earlier, it does not prevent someone from selling their house as-is. If someone wants to sell their house and move on, that's a hundred percent okay. It then passes the burden of bringing a house that could potentially be very subpar up to par. This, you know, we do have a lot of house trading going on in this community of houses that are not in good shape, potentially do have serious safety concerns. And frankly, some people, not everybody, because there's a lot of people that do take pride in their homes, but just don't care. And that frankly puts the rest of the community at risk. As you know, our houses aren't very close together. Perfect example, and our fire department has spoken of this in the past, that if someone has a house that is being neglected, not being inspected, not up to par, or a severe risk, you know that quite often if a house goes up in flames, that the houses next to it potentially as, as well can. Not to mention that, I mean, you just want to be able to make sure that the community is rising and not necessarily just deteriorating. We're not making this very strenuous on anyone that buys a home. You know, I would suggest if you want to make a concession in this ordinance, keep it across the board, but make it so that the city can give people adequate time. For example, if you wanted to buy a house that you want to fix up per se, but you want to live in it, that's fine. Let us make sure that the health and safety concerns, like the major things are intact before someone lives in it. We don't necessarily care about paint or some minor things or cosmetic things, but allow us more time to push that six months out to a year or two years so that if someone wants to take their time and fix up the house, that's fine. But allow us to at least inspect it for major safety concerns, because that.
Sometimes that the buyer would want to fix it, not the seller, and he would buy for less money so he can work on it. If it's through the bank, it's already getting inspected by the bank, a thorough inspection. But tell me now, for example, when we buy houses from one county through the auction, it's messed up houses, like, is that included in the inspection?
It would be, yes.
How are you inspecting?
That will be pushed on to the buyer to ensure that they bring it up to par within a set amount of time, a hundred percent. They would have to assume the responsibility to bring that house. Now granted, we already are doing that. We already are telling people that if they buy a dilapidated house from us, that they have an obligation to bring it up to speed. But to some degree, we're limited right now on that because we can only inspect the exterior right now, like only the things we can see. So in theory, if someone were to buy a house from us at auction, and we said, you have two years to bring this up, the best we could do is say, well, the siding looks nice, the roof appears okay. And it could, it could be a death trap inside, and we wouldn't even know about it, because we don't have the ability to go in it right now.
So if the NEZ guidelines here specify that for only the NEZ, why do one, why do you want to expand it for the whole city? Is there like benefit for the inspection company, for example? Because this makes me wonder, a lot of people wants to just buy something cheap, take their time, fix it. Why do I have to get the city involved in determining what needs to be fixed? You know, for a cheap house that I want to buy and take my time to fix? I mean, it seems like, why do we have to include the whole city if the law said only the NEZ area?
Well, we don't want to differentiate for starters, because it makes it a little bit more complex. If we have a policy in place where anything that changes hands is inspected, it takes the confusion out of it. And plus, it's not a bad thing to do this for the whole city.
It's not, actually, but sometimes that's vectors and, you know, we have been getting so many complaints about minor issues that delay the process of, you know, moving forward for a business or a house or anything for, for months and months. And then they, they will come one time, tell you certain stuff, you fix those, the next time they will add more stuff when they come, which is very troubling. I see, I hear so many complaints from the residents, which is very annoying to us as well. When you go there, specify what you want done, and that's it. Don't add stuff when you go back and say, hey, oh, now you fixed this, okay, now there's more stuff here, do this, do that. It is obviously, like, it's a business thing, I see. Like, there's secondary gain from doing this, from going through inspection over inspection. And I think this is going to be included, which we don't want, we want to make things flexible for the city. Do the right thing, but you are overdoing it. Like, this city is, is doing it more, like stricter than any other city. I have, I heard it from business owners, you know, residents, everybody is saying, your city is crazy when it comes to inspection, to building department. And we want to make things easier for residents, but you guys are making it tougher. Like, I know people who own businesses in Water, in Dearborn, in other, Dearborn Heights, Sterling Heights, and they own businesses here, and they go crazy when it comes to inspection and building department. Is this like, why do we have to make it more, like more difficult for people to get things, to get, you know, things done easier? Like, this is, this is something that I'm not feeling comfortable with. It says here, do it for the NEZ area only, that's certified. Now you want to do it for the whole city, which is something we don't need to do. I mean, something it looks like we just want to give people hard time, you know, why?
If I could just mention one thing to consider, sorry. One thing that the NEZ process is really clear about is that it's the individual applicant's responsibility to make it all the way through the process with the state. And I'm pretty well acquainted with it right now, but it has taken a very long time. And it is even more complicated for applicants to try to make it all the way through. In my mind, this removes any possibility for error that an NEZ certificate could be revoked because someone, say, chose not to go to the city to get the inspection because the neighbor across the street that isn't in the NEZ zone didn't, so they don't think that they need to. And then the NEZ goes away because they didn't fulfill the requirement by the state. And because it is the applicant's responsibility to make sure that all those boxes are checked with the state, I think that that sort of removes what I can do certainly with my, you know, Department of Three, to try to make sure that every single person in the community can take it all the way through the NEZ process and get their full fifteen years if they're eligible for it. I just would hate to see something fall through the cracks because this didn't.
Mr. Mayor, let me take that one step further. All the time, we have people trading properties within the community. And we don't know about it till after the fact, when they come in and they, you know, they try to, you know, give us the deed for, you know, to do the primary resident exemption or whatnot. And if we had the opportunity beforehand, before it was actually traded essentially, to explain some things to them, we probably would stop a lot of problems. For instance, one comes to mind where, I think it was a father transferred to a kid or from a business to a kid, it was all the family, but it was his business. And he lost his, his ability to keep his taxes low on all the properties he had because how he did it. And if, if we potentially, if he would have came in because of this ordinance, different effect, we could have had a conversation with him to say, hey, you know, maybe you do it this way, so it maintains this, you know, give it to your son rather than, you know, in which, all the time, as you know, we have a problem with that, with people's taxes capping itself. So it just puts a little bit more, I don't want to say an extra loop, but it puts kind of a catch in place amongst all the other benefits, which is very similar to what Isabel just said, but on a different thing, you know, dealing with uncapping of your taxes to begin with.
But look, the NEZ area now would have some privileges with tax and stuff. Now, yes, okay, if you do inspection there, they already have the chance to get some, you know, tax abatement and stuff, but when you do the same thing for other areas that are not getting any privileges or any chance to get tax reduction or exemption, so that's not fair, that's one thing. And then if you come to inspect a house that's in a bad shape, just like the ones we buy from the county and then put them for auction, you will find tons of stuff that needs to be fixed. And it will require like a hundred thousand or so to fix it. So what are you, what are you going to tell the owner, either the buyer or the seller, hey, you need to fix this and that and that, it will, you will need a hundred twenty thousand to fix that, or you can't sell the house?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, professional investors should be told that. We shouldn't have people flipping properties, trying to take advantage of the system and take advantage of people they're sending to. If it's a professional investor, they should be able to accept and do it.
Could be someone who wants to reside in this house, like D Trade now. I see a lot of people moving to D Trade. They buy the house for five thousand, and then they take their time for a whole year or two years to fix it. I have a lot of friends who moved out of Hamtramck because of this policy.
And Mr. Mayor, that's what I said, though. If someone buys the house and they intend to fix it up over a timeline, if you want to loosen up the ordinance to give them more time to fix it, that's great, because we don't want to prevent people from doing that. We just want to make sure that they're taking care of the health and safety things. Like, if someone moves into a house and, let's face it, they don't have a lot of money to fix it up, and they're, and they have exposed electrical or plumbing miswired, or the furnace isn't properly done, or the water heater isn't vented properly, you know, things that could kill them. You know, and we're not talking about, you know, we're, we're going to restrict their ability because they didn't paint it, you know? I mean, I'm not saying to make it overly complex, but allow the city to make sure that they're not moving into a house that's death trap, you know, just the basic things, you know? And candidly, if someone does that and buys a house near any of yours, and it is in that bad a shape, I mean, I would think the neighbors would want the city to be able to intervene. Right now, we can't at all.
Well, that would be reasonable for people who wants to buy a house, fix it, and rent it. But if you want to live in your house that you are buying, I mean, we don't inspect houses that we live in. I mean, if it's my house and I live in, I'm not, it's not just for as a renting property, you don't have the right to come and inspect it.
This isn't perpetual. This is just a metapoint of sales.
Mr. Chair.
Well, I'm saying, some people buy a house for the first time to reside in it, to live in it, not to invest, not to rent it. So there would be like flexibility on time and, and the way they fix it. And I don't think it's reasonable for the city to get involved in your own property that you want to live in, to tell you what to do.
Mr. Chair, I just look at you first.
Okay, we got three people. Let's start with Musa Muhid.
Thank you. The question is a requirement, when did the requirement started? Does it start recently or it has been required?
It's been in effect since 1992.
So why are you waiting for so long to make it happen now?
So I could, I can answer that. Most of our NEZs, I mean, we did have some NEZs that were in effect, but a lot of them were court ordered. So, I mean, if the court orders it, the court supersedes a lot of things. So I suspect that's the case. I wasn't involved in the old NEZs, but it's, it's definitely in the law.
So there, the fee is going to be involved to inspect the house, so, right? Of course. I mean, as you say, it's big majority of what I was going to say, then we're just getting extraordinary to the people. I mean, our community already have like too much party about houses and everything. It's the whole city completely, I understand, but you know, you can't just add more things to the people's shoulder. I think this is just.
Councilman, you can, you can, this body has the ability to set that fee. I mean, you could make it very cheap and very reasonable. I mean, no one's, no one's saying anything that it has.
We have enough staffing to, you know, inspect all the houses timely manner. It's delayed, it's going to be sales and everything, all this process.
Yeah, absolutely. We're inspecting houses daily.
It's going to be fair for people to do anything.
So it would be more reasonable to follow this law and just implement it on the area certified for NEZ. I mean, that's what they require in the state and everywhere, and it will make sense. Councilman Hassan?
Exactly what you're saying, last minute, that's all I want to say. Nothing else.
Councilman Rafai?
Mr. Chair, we brought this up with, with Ms. Falter, before you came, by the way. And about these inspections, I know it was supposed to be, like the mayor have said, for these NEZ zones. Again, it could be either brand new development or a recent house that's there and that wants to expand in the back. I get it. But why are we doing the entire city? You know, it doesn't. Uh, you know, it just doesn't make sense. Uh, you know, I, I would love if me and my college could change this where it either could be all in NECs or it could be anybody that's a developer.
Councilman, we can certainly change it. I mean, if, if that's council's wish to specify it only for this, that's fine. We'll make that change. I don't recommend it. I recommend it to go all the way across the board. It'd be reasonable with it. But if that's what council wants, we'll make the adjustment for the next reading.
Mr. Chair, that, that kinds of law guideline already there anywhere from the state, so.
Yeah, I mean, it, it says here even in this, I mean, you're in a newer hesitate facility for which the NEZ certificate is in effect, an inspection should be made. So it, it just makes sense here, but we, we just have to make it clear that it doesn't include the whole city until we decide in the future.
I will say, just, I think the key phrase in the requirement is at a minimum, right? It allows you to do things to comply in the ordinance beyond. And the reason we brought the recommendation is because it's in line with how most cities who have NECs handle this type of stuff.
So I think it's wise enough to, to say, add the consent of the both party, the seller and the buyer, if they want inspection to be done, they can request that. If they want that, that's fine. If they don't, it, it, it outside of the NEZ zone. I mean, if we both agree that we want inspection to be done, we request a conference.
And this inspection getting done already, when you, when you buying your house, it's, it happens to be inspected.
No, it's for those old houses that.
If you want additional inspection, then it can be.
Yeah, if it's through the bank or something, yes, it will be done. You can't buy a house.
Right. Just, just to clarify, councilmen, banks will make you inspect it if you're getting a conventional loan of some sort. But people paying cash and just doing transactions on their own, no inspections are given.
Not anymore. The house prices, the way it went up, I don't think people left it on cash.
I think it's.
It's gonna be, that's only for the new house when people they bought it. Yes, for the new one.
Well, if somebody.
Now, Mr. Chair, can we clarify this? That this will only be for NEZ, new development and any areas that we have chosen, whoever wants to extend their house.
Councilman will just do it for NEZ.
Okay, that's reasonable. And then in the future, we can think about expanding.
So we're not going to include the by consent of the buyer?
No, only NEZ zones.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend the resolution on for NEZ.
We can just change it and bring it back to you. This is just the first reading.
Okay. So it'll be changed as you've stated for the public hearing and your vote to adopt at the next council meeting?
Yep.
And then when that is in effect, you'll be able to adopt the zone on the twenty-sixth.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
So, um, am I, are they motioning to amend? Or is it just gonna be changed for the public hearing and they can, they're, they're going to approve?
They're bringing it.
It's not as amended. She's just amending for the public hearing.
Right.
Okay, so we're voting?
The resolution sets the second reading.
Yep. Um, are we voting?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Supporting on bring it back as an amendment?
Yes.
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 Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor, it's an ordinance. Would you like to vote on this?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mr.?
I think we have to send out the agenda for the.
No, it's already on there. It's already set for November twelfth.
Twelfth.
Yep. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Resolution twenty twenty-four one thirty-six A approved.
Thank you.
All right. The next one is Resolution twenty twenty-four one thirty-seven, authorization to enter an agreement for the development and sale of five parcels to Abdu Dajna.
Motion?
Second.
Mayor, I have Isabel to talk on this. I don't think Mr. Dagan is here. Uh, this is a good thing. Uh, he's purchasing five lots to build on. Uh, as you're aware, the gentleman is also the one that is remodeling the gas station on Joseph Campo, uh, has two businesses here currently. Highly recommend this.
So for the renderings in your packet, the parcel is at three eight 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 Miller, um, one one three three Dyer, one one three seven five Dyer, one one three five one Dyer and one two zero nine three Lumpkin would all be developed according to the development agreement. We'd like your permission to sign. Um, they will all be a single-family development, but a varying size because the Dyer lots are fifty by a hundred and the others are thirty-five hundred which is our standard lot size. So we'd appreciate your approval, so I can get this close.
Mr. Chair, by the way, one of the lots, it's gonna be my neighbor's. If that house you have built next to my house, I'm okay with that.
Oh, oh, no, okay.
You'll just have to run it.
Stand the rules. All right.
Hope?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution twenty twenty-four one thirty-seven approved.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution twenty twenty-four one thirty-eight, authorization to enter an agreement for the development and sale of one one eight one zero Dyer to Kazee Ahmad.
Motion?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, happy to present this one as well. Yet another lot going off for a brand new house is, Isabel, you want to take it?
Yeah. Do it, go.
Yeah.
Oh, it's more text.
I like the NEZ news that you presented. It'd be good. So I, I, I bought adjacent property in May. Um, you know, I'm happy to say that it was a storefront with Isabel's help and then the help of the city. And we went through all these inspection stuff. I, I think you were right on, the way you were saying. And I, yeah, this is my first time attending here, but I promise I'll be here every time because this is beautiful, you know, the way you are looking at it. And I think the way you made the compromise, I think this is beautiful. So I'm more delighted. So if I have the, you know, opportunity to do, you know, more, I, you know, I would, I would definitely focus my energy with your support. So thank you, Isabel.
CD is excited about this project, especially because of the corner store development on Comer and Dequender that sat empty for a while. And this would be temporarily an expansion for some workspace to get the marquee out and running, approved ordinance, temporary structures. And then his intent is to make a multifamily development in that neighborhood. So we'd appreciate your approval.
It is a residential area or it is business area?
It's a residentially zoned area. Currently, the parcel he owns has the corner store, um, which we're exploring turning into a multi-use zoning at some point because it's a blank canvas in that neighborhood and a lot of potential. Um, so currently grandfathered in multi-use that he has right now and right adjacent to that is residential, which is what he's proposing in the long term.
Thank you for spending money and trying. Appreciate it. As I, you know, I see the neighbors coming in to the store and the store, you know, he's having difficulty because it's small, but I think, you know, there's, there's the demand definitely there. You know, it's the, you know, the, there's like three, four hundred families live there. They have no, you know, store other than, you know, crossing the freeway, doing stuff, you know. It's, I think it's good for everybody, so.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's welcome, that.
Um, Councilman, Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution twenty twenty-four one thirty-eight approved.
Thank you. And then we have an additional item for discussion, uh, which is discussion and updates on Kenef Street construction and park halls elsewhere.
Motion? Second.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Just Councilman Rafai, you go.
Even though John is the here and bothered to city manager to give us update one, I know we, we have mentioned this in council meetings previously multiple times with Hennessy, that if, if you're gonna do redo Kenef, it needs to be half, side needs to be done. And then wait until that's finished and then open the other half. Uh, we've been getting calls from businesses that, you know, you have shut down the whole block of Joseph Campo and Gallagher and, uh, they're unhappy. So I wanna know what's the reason, even though we, we mentioned here that we want, have to be done. And, uh, and then we start with that and then I'll get the other stuff.
So it is my understanding, and John and Charles, who's actually managing the field, can definitely explain it better, um, that they did intend to do that. They tried to do it. Um, they milled down Kenef. I actually kind of looking at an email from Charles today in regards to this because I, I knew that this would be a frustration point. Um, but basically, when they milled it down, um, the road deteriorated to the point where it, it wasn't safe. Um, they tried opening it a few times. Uh, they kept on coming back in the morning and cars were all parked in the way. Um, and basically it just got to the point where it became very problematic to even try to keep it open. I know at least one of the other councilmen has been actively involved in this out in the field. Um, and is, uh, this is Councilman Samiri, I will actually say, um, kind of pushing us to just get it done at this point. But they did make a, a solid attempt to keep it open. But as I stated, the, it appeared the road, it was just deteriorated so badly after they milled it down that it was unsafe. Um, they're trying to get it done as fast as they can. I'm hearing that it could be open here within a couple of weeks and that whole stretch altogether, um, and then no longer even need to be closed at all. Um, but I, I definitely would have to get John here to be a lot more clear on this.
Well, I know in Holbrook, when they redone the, the street, they did a half and they kept the half the way it is so people can drive on it. So why can if you remove the whole thing and you expect people to drive on the dirt? Uh, to me, that doesn't make sense. So, and now there's another request with all my colleagues here that now the next half of Kenef, okay, it needs to be half side needs to be done. And the half side needs to stay the way it is so we can have through traffic.
I did express to them extremely well that it was to be left open. And I know they tried. I, I don't, I don't know what exactly happened to the site that deteriorated to what point. But they, I, I was told that the, essentially the roadway was so bad when they did take it down to a certain point. I, I guess the attempt was to mill it, take it to a point where it still could be passable, but then the road essentially just fell apart. I don't know if it was just in that bad a condition underneath. Apparently, they, they milled it down two and a half feet and then tried to adjust it to one and a half feet. And there was a bunch of attempts to try and do it. So it wasn't like they just ignored it. Um, because trust me when I say I told them to leave it open and find a way, and they just kept on running into problems.
But to be honest with you, if they, you know, everybody does this in all around the cities, even freeways. When they're, they're, when they do lanes, they do one lane and they keep one lane the way it is. You don't remove the whole thing and then expect people to drive on it. So I can work on, on, on the side.
They, they do mill stuff down. I mean, they, there are times where they'll mill the whole road, leave it, someone intact, ride on, but I, I mean, I don't know how long.
I, I haven't seen that in any city. I drive around. So we're, we're not gonna allow this again to happen. And I'm gonna tell you this, and I'm gonna tell, you, you inform Hennessy that the next block of Kenef, half needs to be done and half needs to stay the way it is so we have traffic. Because now the other half, if, if we really got headaches and I, I guarantee all of us got calls, imagine the other half. So I'm requesting that next phase that we were supposed to be doing, do half, leave the other half the way it is, let people drive on it until you're done and then reopen the other half. Like, how are you at home?
So, Mayor, I think that was the decision we made last minute when Hennessy was here. I don't know why.
You know, we spoke before that.
They were, they went to our last council meeting. We all voted this way.
Perhaps.
And worst thing is making it a little difficult for people to drive the city. It's just really difficult. Everywhere you go, it's blocked. Everywhere you go, it's blocked.
I'm happy to have Hennessy and John here at the next meeting to be more clear on this of why they did it. Because I, I frankly, I'm, I'm not in the field. I'm not a contractor. Um, I've tried to get an update and I did express to them that this was to be done more than you can imagine. Um, I know Councilman Samiri has been out there a lot, participating in this and taking a look and interfacing with them. Uh, perhaps Councilman Samiri can shed some light even more than I can. He's been out there a lot more than I have, candidly.
And, and, and I'll tell them, Councilman Samiri, the reason he's telling you to finish this is because the headaches we've been getting.
Yeah. That information we have next meeting, when he can, we're gonna split the other block.
All right. And my second thing about park halls, uh, you know, I know we do service lines, but try to fix the hallway, you know, at least for you could be driving through it. Now you have one that's on, on Comstock and Gallagher. I guarantee you drove on it. I guarantee all of us, we drove on it. It's really bad. And, and it's been, I guarantee the mayor have been drove on near your clinic. And it's almost two, three inches down. Your car kinda hits and then it's up, so.
Was that a permanent fix or a temporary waiting for the patch to come back down?
It's a bad temporary work. It shouldn't be like that. If, if you keep it, if you wanna keep it temporary, add that metal plywood that they put, like a metal thing on top, so.
I know what you're saying, but there's only so many of those councilmen. And we're doing, candidly, a, a lot of these. Every block has them. So, I, I mean, we're moving as fast as we can and we're coming back as fast as we can. We're doing eighteen hundred of these.
Not on a main road. It should never happen on a main road. So hopefully.
So if there's bad ones that you've noticed, please bring my attention so I can send them out there and touch them up. Like, again, I'm not driving the city all the roads every day. I, I just don't have time to do it. So if you see a problem, bring it to my attention so I can send them out and address it.
I don't have to go drive around the city so I can tell you what streets or things needs to be done. It's either you or we have police officers who drive every day on that street, or even you DPS.
Thank you.
Yeah, DPS needs to check.
Not take it apart.
There's so many I see every day.
I, I feel it's too much to, you know.
But again, they're temporary patches. They make a guesstimate when they put in the asphalt. To, they actually put it up higher than it is so that it sinks down and they're guessing. I mean, it's not, it's not an exact science. It's asphalt that sinks. You know, there, there, those measures would be temporary to come back and it's not.
It's not asphalt. I don't.
It's not asphalt. Nope. That's what I asked you. Was this a, was this a temporary one or was it?
This is completely a bad street. It's, it's.
On main road?
Just something.
Is it a concrete patch or is it asphalt?
They're waiting to come back to fix it, but it's big from, you know, side to side.
From the debris, it's going to the.
It's not patched. It's not.
They, they did something in there, but they left it.
It's a service line.
So you, you can also keep in mind that we are doing three times the amount of construction as any other city our size.
Max, I, I don't want these excuses.
It's not an excuse. We're doing it three times.
I'm telling you this right now, on main road, just anything that's on Comstock and Gallagher. And that's not, it's unacceptable. I'm surprised our officers that drive on that, on that street haven't complained about it.
He's not a model practice.
No, it is a, it's a big hall. It's on Gallagher and Comstock.
I know, but I mean, we're, I always take a model like main road.
No, no, it's just like, it's, it's, it's from one end to another.
Service line. They cut it in.
Okay. So even though my, my brother owns a mechanic's making money out of it, Bill. It needs to be done, you know.
All right. So I think that would be taken care of now. Any other thing is just driving around the city, there's so many park halls that are big and needs to be fixed. It's, it's just a part of the job. You just drive around and you'll see them. Um, that, that, not you, the DPS. Anyway, thank you. So with that, we come to the end of the new business and we move to the reports. I'll start with my report. Nothing much. I have been so busy lately with a lot of events and stuff going on in our city and outside. Probably the most significant one is the visit of the former president of the United States to our city last Friday. Um, and, uh, I think it's a historic visit for our city, especially if this candidate wins the election and become the forty-seventh president of the United States. It was a quick stop before going to the big rally in Detroit. The capacity of the office that we held the event at was limited, so we could not invite many people. So we apologize to those people that we could not invite. Why? We know that some people don't want to come. We respected their opinion and we kept them away, including some of our council members. So it doesn't mean anything. We just respect their opinion. And yes, we, I think it was a good thing for our community because after some stations that were mistakenly said about our community, as President Trump said, that it was a mistake. And he apologized and he recorded a video to our community to say good stuff about it. And then in his speech, he, just coming to our city is a sign or expression of respect and appreciation to our community. Then after that, he had multiple interviews with the media where he said good stuff about our community, which we appreciate. This is just a channel of communication that we opened with him in case he becomes the president. We have a channel of communication with the White House that we can put our concerns, send our concerns and get them addressed. In the past, we used to protest outside in the cold, you know, the snow, and nobody cared, nobody listened to us when problems used to arise. Now I think we have hope that things will be addressed as it happens. That's if he becomes the president of the United States. If not, then we will seek help from Councilman Hassan with Harris. So we really appreciate everyone here. We respect different opinions. And I keep telling the community, we can have different opinions, different political views, but we still respect each other. We have to maintain our unity. We have to work together to serve our community despite the differences in political views. We have to avoid any kind of division. And while there's a major change, a major shift in our community for the first time, this is a healthy thing, you know. We have to have connections with both sides.
Yes.
And that's why we are getting the attention to our city. We put our city on the map for the first time. It never happened in the past. And this is a good thing. People who are bothered by this, I don't know why, you know, our city now on the map, very important. If somebody wants our support, they will come to here, including the presidents and including the vice presidents. You know, if she comes, we will welcome her, but with Trump signs on the streets. So we appreciate, you know, we respect the position and the stance of Councilman Samiri, Hassan and Muhyid. We respect that. And we will continue to work together to serve our community. But I think it was a major event. It made international and national news. And we are, I mean, I personally, we're not here to campaign for anybody, but we have a hope that positive outcomes will come from this visit. And in the future, our community will have a say in the, you know, in the decision-making and choosing who to be the elected officials, whether on local level or the national level. We appreciate everyone who attended. We apologize for those who couldn't come due to their limited seats. And hopefully we'll fix that problem next time and we will invite everybody, you know, in the next visit. Okay, so that's all for me. I mean, there's a lot of events, but I will leave it for my colleagues here and I will start with the mayor for them. You can talk about your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, last Friday, it is a historical visit from White House. Last five, six decades, nobody has the much higher level president or former president visited in our city. And we make it happen. We welcome Mr. Trump, President of Trump, forty-fifth president. And we hope he will be the forty-seventh president of the United States. We welcome him and endorse him. And we work together. It is a, policy is a part of art. It is, it is good. Mayor and our few of colleagues, we support. One side maybe our government or other colleagues supporting Kamala Harris. So we have, both sides have a bridge to go forward. But I hope in future, when President Trump elect and you're gonna come to visit us, or he did not forget us, he's gonna visit our city. And we can get the benefit from those visits. And next Friday, Vice of America visiting our community. And Mayor and myself, at the apartment time, around two thirty, to visit the city of Hamtramck. So I hope we're gonna, everybody come in to share with your opinion. And thank you very much to give me the opportunity. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Now we move to the city council report.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Fai, you start with you.
First of all, I want to thank everybody who showed up here tonight. Again, by the way, for Trump visiting Hamtramck, it's a historical day for Hamtramck because previous other presidents have visited Hamtramck. Reagan have visited Hamtramck, Bill, Senator Bush visited, yeah, Kennedy have visited, so now Trump, you know.
Clinton too.
Bill Clinton. So it is a historic day for us, for the city of Hamtramck. So I'm happy. We have either former presidents or presidents visiting this two-point-one square miles. Like you said, everybody's talking about Hamtramck, and that's a good thing. Second, Southeast Michigan Council of Government, it's an organization that provides safety for children and adults with bikes. So I have some so-called toys or lights for bikes and kids or adults who do ride the bikes around the city or county. We have some, a few of them here with our deputy chief, and they're gonna be.
They'll be in traffic and record.
Traffic and record. So anybody from our citizen, anybody from, you know, nearby the city that wants them for his kids or adults, they could swing by our city, second floor and grab some. Again, thank you very much again. Have a good night and God bless.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. First of all, I'm gonna give you a benefit of doubt to bringing Mr. Trump to the city of Hamtramck. There's no doubt about it.
He achieved your goal and now you're becoming a person and politically, you know, to a people war. But I have some depressing people who called me and asked about their concern. When you introduced Mr. Trump to the stage, you mentioned Arab-American and Yemeni-American, the community. But even though you got our mayor's portam, but you never mentioned anywhere in the Yemeni-American.
I mentioned Muslim-Americans.
Muslim, are you saying Arab-American and Yemeni?
No, I said the Muslim-American. I said, review my.
I reviewed the tape and I listened to that.
It's here, I can play it now. Let's make it clear. I mean, the beginning, I said, on behalf of Hamtramck residents, the Arab-American and the Muslim-American.
But you never mentioned any Bangladeshi-American even.
Well, the reason, the reason I mentioned the Yemeni in the middle of the speech is because he said something about the Yemenis. He didn't say anything about Bengalis. So I said, as an immigrant who is from Yemen, I, and then I talked about it. Because Councilman Hassan keep posting about the Yemenis. He called them terrorists and this and that. So I had to mention in the middle of my speech to address that concern. And for him, I told him, you are saying you are coming to deport people here. So that part is a response to his statement. But the beginning of my speech, I said, on behalf of Hamtramck residents, the Arab-Americans and the Muslim-Americans. And I guess Bengalis are majority Muslims, right?
But if you say this, we probably will make the citizens happy that in a year and a half.
Well, I did, I did. And that's why I put them in the big, in the front seat and I made them take a picture with.
Regardless, I'm not gonna go to argument. This is what it is. I just expressed people concern what they.
Well, I think it's your concern and Hassan.
Well, that's what if you think, this is your.
Yeah, I know. Councilman Hassan, he posting about his statement to get the support of the Yemenis. So I had to address that statement in my speech. But I made sure that three Bengali community leaders.
Yes.
Mayor Potam, Councilman Sajman, Kamal Rahman came. Two of them took a historic picture with the president and honored him. And I think that's a respect for the Bengali community.
Yeah, this is based, posting a picture only for Facebook. They are profiled, but not, it doesn't make the community happy. Anyways, Mr. Mayor, you know, I'm not arguing about this. This is what it is. I just wanna request everyone, please participate in the vote, regardless of your opinion, Democrat or Republican, you know, your vote is a voice. And that's gonna make us on the count that how many Muslim people will live in the city or in this county or Michigan. That said, I say thank you, everyone who participated in today's meeting and thank you to all.
Thank you. Thank you. And don't forget, we have in our community other minorities. I didn't mention all of them. I just mentioned the ones that needed to be addressed in regard to Trump's statement.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Hassan, go ahead.
All those respect, you make the story and I'm proud of you. So second thing, we all have the right of speech in the United States of America. Freedom, I can support who I like. You support who you like. Some Facebook leader tried to make us little problem and I'm not worried about that and I never say bad word to nobody. All those respect to the, in front of me, all those residents. Of course, I'm the elected official. I have to listen to the criticize. I respect the criticize. Second thing, I'm not worried about Gaza. What I say is the clarification is not there, why? Because the Hayan Palestinian Street Resolution go down. When Mayor speak to the council, bring the resolution back, and the first one brought the resolution back. Then we reconsider, we got the Palestinian Street. So here is the deal. Whatever Democrat lot of thing doing, I disagree with them. And I know that. But the other hand, the thing is what happened in Gaza also. And what happened to the Iraq, there is a Republican president destroyed the Iraq. There is not even one ounce chemical found internationally. So just, just both sides say, yes, I believe she's gonna do better. And we have spoke to a couple of team members from her core team. She will stop. But yes, all politician, me say, you say a lot of things, but we cannot do a lot of things. Again, there is no measure and Hamtramck make the story. This way or that way, I'm looking for fifty million dollars from Washington to fix my sewer systems. If Donald Trump go there, I want you to help that. If Kamala Harris go there, and I go for them. That is the, our respect. And I'm requesting my friends, all the Facebook friends, please donate. Do not make the division for the things, some of the hottest stuff we say is other. And also media. If you say A, they try to go to the B. They will do that. So I don't take them as seriously. I respect everybody and I'm here. Of course, Mr. Mayor, when you sleep, I wake up to go home, I go to work. I post two posts every day to beat you up every day, every single minute. The two posts goes to the what he says in Slovenia, what is the, because I'm supporting somebody else. I have to post that. Until I heard from his mouth in the public his piece, apologize, then I will stop it. Nothing personal. Again, I'm proud of my Hamtramck, United States and outside the United States. Hamtramck is the big deal. Hamtramck is the big deal and everybody knows. And I respect my, all the people who criticize me. I want you to more criticize, no problem, and I respectfully accept it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think, you know, he mentioned many countries and he apologized to one who had to apologize. But he did apologize behind the camera. He did apologize in person. He said, these are great people. They are the warmest people I ever meet. They are very smart people. And he said a lot of good stuff behind the camera. By the way, the ones who invaded Iraq, Cheney and his daughter are supporting Harris. She came with them yesterday. Do you know that?
I know that.
Liz Cheney came yesterday with Harris. She and her dad are war criminals. They are the ones who designed, the architect invasion of Iraq. They are now in the side of Harris, by the way. And so you keep, you can keep posting about, you know, saying whatever you want about the Yemenis, but the whole community is behind me and half of the Bengali community. So I appreciate that. And I mean, we still, like we said, we respect everyone. And we respect all the people who have different opinions and we still serve them equally in this city. And we are not gonna let our different opinions divide our community. So thank you so much. And any other reports? All right, I guess we come to the end then. We move back to the public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mark Correia, would you like to speak?
Three minutes, sir.
Three minutes?
Yes, sir. Two minutes and twenty-five seconds.
Just wanna address some of the issues here after about Kamala Harris and what they've done and the administration has done. August twenty-second, Kamala Harris in Chicago accepted the Democratic National Convention, now vice president. That same day, her administration authorized twenty-two billion dollars in arms shipments to Israel. At the same time, she was representing, she wanted peace and a ceasefire in the Middle East. Her acts do not match in any sort of manner the acts of somebody seeking peace. It's somebody who's duplicitous and it's disgusting. What I've seen from that impairment is gracious and total disregard of the rule of law. The National Criminal Court has been addressed by U.S. senators via Zoom, trying to stop criminal charges against the Defense Minister of Israel, Yoav Galant, and also the Prime Minister Netanyahu. I saw more, more addressing of the outrage of Netanyahu's bedroom window being damaged by a drone as opposed to seventy-three people who died in a refugee camp as a bombing in Gaza. This has been an outrage for our entire community. This has been an outrage for people in the airport, for Hamtramck people, the Muslims across the country are outraged by what is happening. We cannot support this. I mean, if someone votes green, vote green, that's fine. I support Trump because I think he's gonna have the power to do it. Okay, I think he's gonna have the power to go in there and shut it down, what's happening now. The murders must end. Forty-two thousand people have been murdered. And the bad administration has been completely silenced. In fact, they've actually been more and had people to fire. All Kamala Harris and Biden do is go to the Security Council and support unanimous vote to stop the war and to send troops in force. There's prior resolution. They do that. They continue to give billions of dollars in weaponry so they can carry out the killings of innocent women, children in Lebanon and in Gaza. This hypocrisy is the greatest I've seen in my lifetime. It must end and that's why we need to have Kamala Harris defeat it. Thank you.
Mr. Bill Meyer?
Okay, so I really appreciate the way you carry on business. It's so different than the way it used to be. I mean, we used to have councilmen standing up and fighting each other right there and banging and gabbling, talking over top of each other. I don't remember those days. It's same. I appreciate you all for working together. We may disagree, but the greatest thing is it's calm in here and we can talk. Thank you. Let's first be happy that our city is fixing our streets. Maybe faster than most of us would like, but they're getting done finally. So that's great news. I don't know why we don't use signs, detour signs. I don't think I've seen one detour sign anywhere. Be nice for people from out of town, like when they come down Kinif and Joseph Kalpott says, turn right, detour right. And then at Belmont, you make a left, and then you go make a left at Gallagher and you're back on Kinif. I mean, it's as easy as that. You can get around that block. I feel bad for the businesses in that block. I live right there. I know a lot of people using my street to go west on Kinif. So we can put the bad roads fixed. Let's find a solution. And that hole in the road is terrible. I go over it every day. It is a big hole, about three or four inches deep on both sides, all the way across the road. There's no way to avoid it. You drive on the sidewalk, which I've seen some people try to do. So the city doesn't have to endorse any candidate. This is your personal opinion. I don't know if you know that. There's people here in this city who vote for it, all different kinds of things. So that's your personal opinion. I don't even know if that should be at the council meeting, but that's nice. As far as the historic event from our former president, I don't know if you've noticed on the wall, if you walk past it every time you come to meetings, there's pictures of every president that has been in the city here. So now let's put a picture on the end there with Mayor and Trump at the end, but he's not president yet. I mean, if he is, you put the picture there. Okay. One minute, Kinif. One more minute?
Yep.
Okay. So you don't have to invite anyone to the Trump office anymore because election's next week and you won't need that office anymore. You won't be here and you won't see the candidates anymore, just like as usual. Candidates come to your city when they need you. After the election's over, whoever it is, more likely, they're gonna be too busy to come back to Hamtramck. So we all know how candidacy works and campaigns work. You're out on the road constantly trying to get voted for, and once you get voted, you have no time to talk. You've gotta do your work. So thank you for the invite, but I will wait for the city to call down on next week. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ahmed Shara?
Salaam alaikum. First of all, I'm supporting Hamid Sumiri, supporting Hassan, and supporting everything goes by American. Meaning whatever Gallup said, it wasn't true. Trump called Yemeni terrorists. I've watched the video. It was a novology at all. He said, you're great. He didn't talk about Yemeni. He said, the country is bad. He's trying to fix it, but he didn't fix his policy. Respect in my religion, respect in myself, respect in my city. Mr. Mayor and Councilman, I hope you do better. I see what you guys are bottling in the Facebook. It's disgusting. It's really. I don't wanna mention this. I don't wanna translate it so people will look at us in low, at low level education. Anyone who's support Harris, who's support Democratic, he's not a gay. I've read since nineteen eighty-four, the Supreme Law in United States supporting those. I've read since nineteen eighty-four, the Supreme Law in United States supporting those people, I'm gonna say it that way, which is, that's not in our religion. And you know what's gay in our religion, so I'm not gay, Mr. Hassan is not gay, and Mohammed Asmari is not.
Who said that? Where is it?
I seen that in Facebook, and you guys supporting it, okay? I didn't say, I didn't say in your page, it's a page that you guys are making a comment. If you make a comment in one page, that means you supporting that page, but anyway. We will, we will, I get those copy, we're not here for that.
So, if speaking, come with a comment and talk to the people.
Sure, so, I'm gonna say that one more time. Any person that you support in his idea, in you there as a mayor, or their support behind you, it's a different matter. Please do not bring the third world policy here. I hope you get, you talk about the girl that was gonna get killed this week, I hope so, you didn't give her a visit. Whatever you said, sir, I really appreciate it. Today, I was actually here to talk about, you know, security. Last week, we get three cars, I think it's stolen, I called the other day to the police department, you know what he tell me? Go call D-Trade. Okay, you know, I still do the patrolling, a car get stolen, somebody called me, when I called the police, where the car at, he said, I can't help you. It was stolen in Hamtramck, three cars. So, work for the city, and I appreciate this, and I'm not against you, but please do not bring hate and division to this, to the city. Let's work together, thank you.
Hassan?
Good afternoon, would you pass those around?
I will.
I need a pass around, I need you put in, put in the record, please. Good afternoon, my name is Mohammed Hassan Radko. Anyways, 'cause I can, because of the Democrats now, I can identify myself, I can say, I can identify myself as anal. I can identify myself anything I want today. Just remember one thing, today, Bill Bazey just endorsed Donald Trump, does that make any sense to me? Guess who started to make America great? Our mayor over here, the Hamtramck mayor, I'm very proud of him, you know why? Because he's not a radical left side. Democrat is radical rubber stamp, very simple. And you got over here Mohammed Hassan, he radical, radical. Let me ask you guys a question, I wanna answer, Chair, I wanna answer his question. When he said that he only talked about Yemenis. I'm Lebanese, you know what Lebanese means, I am Lebanese person, and Mr. Mayor did not speak about it. I'm getting bombed, we're getting bombed, my family's in the street. You think I'm gonna attack him just because he didn't say? He said Middle Eastern, and once he says Muslim, that means he's talking about me. I'm not gonna sit there and tell him, oh, Ben-Gadi right now is not getting bombed, we're getting bombed, we're getting criticized. They call us terrorists all the time. Now, during the Bush administration, why you think people went Democrat? Why? Because of the war. Now, twenty-four years later, we're facing the same thing, and the mayor made a good decision, I like one more minute. And very simple, you have to understand that you cannot criticize somebody just because they don't mention your religion. He didn't mention, did you mention, Mr. Mayor? Did you say Lebanese? I'm gonna criticize it 'cause I'm getting bombed. He criticizes us all the time, but you gotta understand something. This is politics, something that you guys have to understand. Would he stop the war? Absolutely, he's a businessman, he's not no politician. When you're not a politician, right? You're not nobody's puppy. You're gonna tell me Donald Trump is gonna listen to the Republican agenda or the Democrat agenda, he's gonna do what he wants. And that's why I like that guy, and that's why I respect that guy. The other day, he was working at McDonald's, what does that tell me? He feels what the people, he knows what's going on. Groceries are high, let me tell you something. Let right now, call Kamala Harris, tell her to wake up Sleepy Joe at four o'clock in the morning, and tell him to stop the war. She can do it now, Donald Trump can't, so I don't wanna hear about Harris no more, I'm tired of it, I'm sick of it. I'm sick of everybody telling me Harris, tell her to wake up that Sleepy Joe right now, four o'clock in the morning, and do a ceasefire. He can do it now, not tomorrow, now. You guys wanna sit here and come criticize the mayor because he did what he did? Innocent children are getting bombed because of Harris, there's blood on the Democrat hands. You gotta understand something, this is very critical. You think I'm worried about him telling me, oh, Lebanese, he didn't mention it, why are you ready to criticize him for it? You just want one little thing to say about the mayor, but let this remind you, remind you something. As long as the war stops and my people stop getting killed in Lebanon, I'm not worried if he says Lebanese. I'm not worried about nothing. People make mistakes, but Kamala Harris, four, over a hundred thousand people are dead. Now, if you put a Muslim ban, how many people die if the Muslim ban, nobody?
Time out.
Thank you. Yeah, time out, thank God, huh? You got it good, huh?
Thank you. Andrew Zichet?
Yeah. That's an amazing discussion here, so, that's the first time I'm here. I'm living here for forty years, nineteen eighty-four, so I seen a lot. And, and over the years, in early nineties, people was moving up, I was still stay here. I have, I grew up, four kids, and they went through the public school, I had no problem. So, now, we finish college, we got PhDs and all the following, so. And I'm working my, only myself, and what I seen it over the years, it's so great right now, in couple years, I, I can absorb it. You know, forty years of to be here, and I see, thank you, Mayor, because you did it, you know, even we had the mayor before, it was, she was Polish, and she didn't do nothing. And this one, this, we are growing this, this city, and I like it. Also, I saw the video on YouTube, and I'm very appreciate it, we'll send it to a lot of people in Poland, it is on Polish. So, so then, and one more thing, and I wanna say about the Kenev. Very, we, I absorb it, because I'm living on Sobieski, by Bozek, not far. We had the gas leaks, we had the water leaks, you, you guys went about three, four times to the same road, and you say this was, because it was giving? No, because it was digging so many times. One thing, and to this day, it's still the same, you know, I'm in the business of environmental, so I understand that ground. I worked underground in Poland for four year, uh, four thousand feet, no problem. So, to, and also, we have our An Sobieski, between Sobieski and Kinga, is the drive through. So, people going from the Bozek, they wanna passing through, there's so many holes there. I've been trying to get it, I said, okay, maybe I can do, you know, myself, to bring this asphalt and put it into the hole. Because I'm, I'm parking in the, I'm parking in the garage, I have two cars, and I leave the, you know, street. So, I tried to get it parking there. So, also, on the street, on Yari, it's a very high point. So, I said, well, I then don't take the machine and just grind it up, you know, that's, that's a very simple solution to things. So, I can, one more time, I'm, thank you so much, and I'm very appreciate it, and all my family too.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kaziah Khan?
Thank you. Mayor, I'm from Bangladesh, and I don't hold you responsible or, you know, for not mentioning Bangladesh, but I would have appreciated if you did. But what the councilman said, I, you know, it may have sounded like, you know, he was kind of criticizing you, but I think I have heard other people telling him in front of me. So, I think between the two, you know, I think he meant by respect. So, not that you have to say it, but, you know, people would have felt, you know, some people feel like that, I don't think anybody is holding it against you, and I totally understand, you know, your point of view. Because if you mention Bangladesh, you have to mention Pakistan, you have to, you have to, Paul, you have to mention everybody. So, I think you did good, but, you know, this is, it is a sentiment, that's all.
Thank you.
But I appreciate what I heard today, you know, and I see everybody in this room, nobody was handed three hundred million dollars, I can guarantee you. Alright, everybody earned where they are. So, all I ask, is you close your eyes, and you think, what are you doing? You know, you read history, where this country is, the reason you sitting over there, I don't see one majority sitting over there. You, you're the minority of minorities sitting over there, how did we get here? How did you get there? People lost their lives, people were, people were, I don't wanna say what, how we got here, we have responsibility. What is our responsibility? Not to me, yeah, I wanna own a gas station, I wanna get a, I wanna get government contract, but then I'm gonna close my eyes, I'm gonna leave. What am I living? What legacy am I living? Short-term gain versus, this is the greatest country in the world, I'm standing here, and I can call Sleepy Joe. Where I come from, if I call the sitting president Sleepy Joe, he would up, opened it up, and made me go sleep, you know that. This is the greatest country in the world, you're sitting in responsible positions, we all look at you. You, your politics, politics, it's beyond my understanding, it's beyond all of our understanding, we just do whatever it is. So, I hope, you know, and after November fifth, Hamtramck is not gonna matter, you are not gonna matter, I'm not gonna matter. One minute, please.
Cut.
So, we know, we do not count, you know, back home, we have a saying, I cannot be a peacock if I'm a crow. I said that to my family, and they get all mad at me, I can put a suit on, I am who I am. Who respects me? I gotta respect myself, that's what, and I just said, this is how I feel, I will vote Republican when I agree with them, I will vote Democratic when I agree with them. I don't agree with anybody right now, and I think the situation with Gaza, Gaza is not created by one person. And nobody in this country, this is my humble opinion, noble politician in this country has what it takes to stand up against it. It's gonna be solved by the parties that are there, we're just meddling with it, we should not meddle with it. We should let the people that are fighting, fight it out. Whatever it is, we should not meddle with it, this has gone on for hundreds of years, you know, thousands of years, right? So, I hope that we, at the end of it, we can come together, and, you know, prosper this community and respect each other. Because strong, we are, when we are together, we are strong. I see no difference between you and I or anybody on the street, so Hamtramck is strong when we are together. I hope we can put all our differences aside, vote for whoever we want to vote for, but vote for sure, but then let's respect each other. Thank you for the opportunity.
Greg Kretschner, go ahead.
Mayor, Council, first of all, I would like to thank the mayor for inviting me to the Friday's event. And to that, they would not allow the TV cameras at the event. However, our public TV, Hamtramck Public TV, has recorded the entire event from the beginning to the end for anyone to see. And if you wanna see the event, you can go to the Hamtramck Public Library site, to the archives, to the videos. And from the beginning to the end, there is no cuts in between. And I would also like to thank the police chief and the police department for providing security for the TV cameras, which were not allowed inside. And in order to have TV, our, TV cameras there, we would have to make arrangements with the security service prior to the event. And this was something that we were unaware of, that's why the entire film that was made on the event has been made with a cellphone, basically. But still, the quality and the sound is good enough for the historical files, so it became a historical documentary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Shaker Sadee?
A little bit more, everyone else, thank you, I'm not used to being on the podium. But one thing that I notice, and easy, Mr. Manager. I think the city of Hamtramck, you seen that developed in last ten years, that the residents has turned fifty thousand dollars house to a three hundred fifty thousand dollars house. The whole credit goes to the residents, the city does not do whole lot. The reason I'm saying that, I had a plumber inspector went to the Kenev building four times, and I missed it by one minute. He saw me in the car waiting for him, he didn't look at it, he just posted a sign, missed that one minute. So, my request to everyone with all due respect, all due respect, that a lot of companies doesn't wanna work in Hamtramck. We called the fence guy in Warren, they said, is it in Hamtramck? Wouldn't work there. So, don't feel bad, there is a lot of construction companies, a lot of roofing companies, no one work in Hamtramck. So, I think if the manager and the cabinet have a training process for the inspectors, how to talk to the people, how to be nice. When people come pull apartment, be nice, then they'll be happy. But every time somebody gets, gets into trouble with the inspection, we treat the, the city treat them kind of criminal. So, people get scared, because they are the new immigrants and stuff. So, in some cities, I worked in some cities, when you go to the building department, inspection department, it's like a five-star hotel service, because, you know, they want you to spend money, they want you to be here. Some people, you know, our residents are afraid of Hamtramck, no matter how many codes you have, people won't comply. As long you asking with a nice smile, and say, we'll help you, we'll explain to you things like that. When I, rental inspection, I was there, he was like, he was an inspector, he was like the FBI agent. I was there, because some people, when they have speaking, you know, communication gap, they ask us, like, community people to come help. All he had to do, said, you know what, don't worry about it, I'll explain to you, just get it done, I'll give you two more days. It's like, you know, people are afraid of them. So, my request is, if the energy is good, do it, but you gotta have the professional trained people with the continued education. Like, you know, if you see an older guy, doesn't speak English, he gotta know how to talk to you nicely, don't scare them. The city will go up and up again, because look, the twelve hundred dollars, the one, one house on Sobieski, paying twelve hundred dollars a year. The next house was sold four times in ten years, he spent six thousand. So, it's a diverse city, and with the residents, is taking it all the way up there. So, I think that's all you gotta include in your next meeting, consider this, you'll be a better city, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's all for the time.
We actually, I actually had a discussion today about this with, with the city man, and we discussed about, you know, some complaints about.